Would you like to call the meeting to order? Stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two board members are not here. They couldn't make it tonight. I need a motion to go into executive session real quick. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Don't run away. We won't be long. Good. Need a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Amador.
I'll second.
Second by Kristen. Okay. Superintendent's report. Dr. Morgano.
Your first order of business is one that gives me great pleasure to award an AOK award to our SRO, Sean Grady. Sean? When the seniors went to get their holiday tree, they, of course, didn't have enough money. Sean laid out the money and gifted them the tree to the tune of about $100. And Sean, it was a great thing to do, and we appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. I'll turn over the AOK awards to the two principals.
So I have four AOK awards to give out. I have two students and also two teachers this month. The first AOK award I'd like to give out is to Jacob Polarchik. Jacob is a big help for the Young Odyssey the Mind students that come up to his classroom. Come on up, Jacob. All right? And he's always willing to help classmates in class. Next AOK award I'd like to give out is for Annabelle Riley, her teacher, Mrs. Count. Annabelle, while another student was having difficulty while reading, she helped her sound out a lot of the words, which was wonderful. She was patient and kind, helping her classmates figure out the work. On the same day at recess, she noticed a classmate crying. She ran over to her and asked her to play. Both of these acts show her to be such a kind, caring classmate, and we couldn't ask for any more from our GRM students. My last two awards go to two of my teachers in my school who I could not be more proud of, and I'm overall proud of my entire staff at GRM. But I had a conversation with a parent on a totally separate incident a couple weeks ago, and she brought to my attention that right before Christmas break, her and her daughter had to be quarantined, actually isolated, as she had tested positive and her daughter had to quarantine. These two teachers came to me from the parent that they offered to go shopping for this mom who was going to have difficulty getting out of the house. And when, you know, sometimes we make an offer and we don't always really mean it. I can guarantee you from these two, Ms. Linda Hazen and Ms. Jen Heisler, they mean every offer they give. And I couldn't be more proud of them, and I could not be happier to give you this AOK award.
I don't have a mic, but I can probably voice is loud enough. So for my, I have three AOK awards that's going around, and I actually have two sisters in Jelka and Jalen. And I am presenting them because we have a new student. Yes, they also told me it was their cousin, so they still didn't have to talk. But they took them up, looked, waited them there, made sure they got all the supplies, made sure they had some place to sit at once. They introduced them around. They made him feel welcome, which is very hard to do at middle school age. Okay, so our freshman, you're kind, you can go to your cousin. My third AOK award goes to Xavier. Now Xavier is also a musician that you could not tell because every day he comes in and welcomes everyone, says good morning, have a great day, just wants to be home. His positive attitude is absolutely infectious. And every person he comes in and contacts with just cannot stop laughing thinking about how a wonderful young man he is. So thank you, Xavier, for showing that positive attitude every single day.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Michael. Oh, go ahead. Hold on. They're all free to leave if they want. Feel free to leave. If you want to be bored, you can stay. If you want to go, we won't be insulted. So feel free to leave.
Thank you for coming. Next Wednesday will be the first meeting of the district-wide bond committee. It includes parents, teachers, community members, administrators, and students. We have some idea of what things should be done. We have a building condition survey report to go by. For instance, we know we need roof work in the elementary school, but we need to prioritize the list and maybe add to it. So the input from this committee is going to be very valuable in identifying the priorities. And that committee will give a report to the Board of Education, who will make the ultimate decision regarding the bond. The calendar for 2223 is going to be reviewed tonight. There are only four snow days in the calendar, and that's not because I don't think it's going to snow. I think snow days are on their way out, and we have the option now with virtual. So if we use those four days, any other days that it snows will be virtual days. But this calendar enables us to give a week off at Thanksgiving, which is some most heavily traveled time in the year, and it gives the opportunity for people to plan a nice vacation. Our budget was reduced by $100,000. Our assemblywoman, Aileen Gunther, is seeking bullet aid to make us whole. And she's helped us many times before, and I have no reason to think she won't be successful this time. The new signs for the high school and the elementary school are delayed until March due to angle iron. The angle iron that holds the sign up is not available. So we're hoping sometime in March. The fitness center excess equipment is being sold as is with a liability waiver, and Caleb can speak more to that. The mask mandate continues. I anticipate the possibility of it being pulled about the second week in March. We're revising our stay open plan and our reopening plan. And the main change in the plan is that, once the mandate is lifted, face masks are going to be encouraged but not required unless mandated by the appropriate governing agency. I think if the state and the health department say we don't need masks, I'm not going to substitute my judgment for theirs, and we won't have masks. People are welcome to wear them, but they won't be required. Thank you. That's my report.
Any questions from the board for Dr. Morgano? All good. Thank you, Dr. Morgano. Elementary principal report.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. Dr. Morgano, board. Our attendance continues to rise since we've had a dramatic decrease ever since Thanksgiving. Although we saw a decrease of 0.05% in our attendance from the last board report on January 13th, I will tell you in the last 10 days, we are approaching 95% attendance, which is a great sign, especially as we get to more in-person learning consistently. We have been utilizing our attendance liaison here at the high school and in the district to visit families of chronic absenteeism, and I've seen an increase as well of those students coming to school more consistently. With our academic outcomes, we have multiple data points using our STAR and FastBridge data. We will be adopting Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment Systems to progress monitor students' reading levels next year. And I've created a report card committee consisting of parents, staff, and support staff, as well as myself and other administrators within the district, to look at moving to trimesters and adjust report cards to align with the New York State Next Generation Learning Standards. We're preparing for the New York State assessments in the spring. I've begun to start to create a catalog of clubs for spring for all grade levels. Our Odyssey the Mind team competes on March 5th at OU Bosse's. And again, I have a conversation to be had with Sullivan County Bosse's and the Cornell Cooperative to bring 4H back to the school. They were here with our kindergarten instruction for six weeks, and we're looking to do first and second grade before spring break. Buildings and grounds, we are looking to have a main entrance sign put above the doors at GRM. The new sign at the bottom of the hill for GRM is ready for installation when it gets delivered in March. And I just got word that the polymer should be in, and we're going to start to talk about putting down the footing, not the footing, I'm sorry, the padding, for our new playground at George Ross Mackenzie Elementary School. So we hope to have that done as soon as possible so that kids can use it. That concludes my report.
Any questions for Michael from the board? None? Thank you, Michael. Tracy, you're up.
Okay. Again, as we're following suit with our attendance, currently we are, since the second quarter, we did have our biggest drop. It was a net decrease of 2.5%. But right now with third quarter, we've already gained 3.76%. So we are also back on track with our attendance. We have some amazing musicians. We have 21 students that were selected to represent Eldred at the Sullivan All County Music Festival. That's going to be held at Monticello, March 4th and 5th. We have six of our kids that earned a placement in the junior high, which is 7th grade through 9th grade, all county jazz band. That's more than any other school in the county. So, and then two of them are leading their sections. We even have our principal first tromboned, Owen. So we have nine kids just in the junior high mixed chorus, and then we have six kids for the senior high concert band, and then we have six students in the junior high jazz ensemble. So they, we have amazing musicians. We are a really strong program, and I'm very proud of them. We continue to work towards our, the ELA and math assessments. Currently, right now, they are still taking place. We are also working, Ms. Garen is working diligently on our 2223 schedule. She is already in the process of meeting with classes, students. They are reviewing transcripts, four-year plans, post-secondary goals, and plans. I have also met with all the department coordinators. We reviewed our course offerings for next year and have made those edits. The junior high school schedule is already being built. We do have some upcoming dates. For our seniors, February 25th, they are getting measured for their caps and gowns, so we are well on our way for graduation season. March 2nd is spring physicals, and then on March 21st, we are having a PBIS-sponsored assembly. They're called Attaboy, and that will be a concert during the day. And then we will also be hosting a community concert that night. So more information to come about Attaboy. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Tracy from the board? All good. Thank you, Tracy. Junior, senior high school student report. You're up, big guy.
All righty. Everyone can hear me all right? All right. Good evening, everybody. So I'll first kind of add on to what Ms. Ferrera said about the Attaboy concerts. The PBIS is hosting the school-wide assembly featuring the Attaboy Band on Monday, March 21st. They focus on students making positive choices, teaching not to judge others, and self-worth. They are hosting two sessions, one for the upper levels of the elementary school, which we're still working out who that will include, and then up through the eighth grade, and then another for the high school students as well. And then, as she said, they will be doing a free concert in the evening for the public. The Ski Club has been enjoying the season and hopes that the snow continues on at the Big Bear Mountain. The Archery Club is taking five students to the State Archery Tournament in Syracuse on March 18th as well. The National Honor Society is hosting a blood drive on February 16th in the high school cafeteria. If you are interested in donating and have an account, sign up online and choose your donation time, or you can also sign up with Ms. Ross directly at the drive. The American Red Cross is also giving each donor a digital $10 Amazon gift card, and we are halfway to reaching the goal of 35 pints donated for the year. After reaching 35 pints donated, the, a National Honor Society member will be eligible for a $250 scholarship through the organization. The senior class is currently hosting a fundraiser with the company Snackin' in the USA to continue gathering funds for their senior trip in May. Students have been diligently, had been diligently preparing for auditions for the annual senior wind band celebration at Marywood University this past weekend. Inclimate weather conditions unfortunately made us incapable of attending the event. However, many of us still look forward to preparing music for the upcoming All County Music Festival. This year, the Eldred Performing Arts Club is proud to announce that they will be presenting Magic to Do, a virtual musical review celebrating the songs of Stephen Schwartz. The show will be a showcase featuring the songs of Stephen Schwartz, who is an American musical theater lyricist and composer, who has written such hits as Godspell, Pippin, and Wicked. After a three-to-four rehearsal period, each performer will be recorded performing their songs with a little bit of choreography and costuming as well. The directors will then edit all of the videos together to make the show. By recording this way, students will be able to perform without masks and will not have to worry about bringing a large audience together in these tricky times. As always, I would like to thank you all for having me, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you very much. Scott, you're up.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. And I just wanted to let you know we are still a targeted school. The federal government had determined that they weren't going to accept the waiver, so based on our test scores this year, we might not be a targeted school next year. So we'll see how that plays out once the assessments take place. Our February 14 conference day is next Monday, so the day after the Super Bowl, so enjoy your football on Sunday. And I provided you a outline of the conference day agenda for you so you can see what's taking place that day. And lastly, we are still inviting Dr. Rice and Dr. Weinberg in to our district. They are providing inclusion workshops for our special ed and regular ed teachers, and our writers workshop is continuing with Dr. Weinberg. And those things will continue. We also have an update that we are going to be providing, Orton Gillingham, which is an intervention program training for our staff at the elementary school and our some special ed teachers at the junior, senior high school, and that will take place between now and the end of the school year. And that's all I have for you this evening.
I believe there's a correction. Isn't that conference day after President's Weekend? The Super Bowl is this weekend.
The Super Bowl is this Sunday.
That's right.
Yes.
Conference day is after President's Weekend, or I'm wrong?
No, the conference day is on Monday.
This coming Monday.
Coming Monday.
Okay. My mistake.
If I said that incorrectly.
Nope, nope, nope. You said it right. You said it right.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any questions for Scott? Business official, Caleb.
Okay. Is this thing working? Okay, good. So let me get these four things out of the way first before I present just some things on the budget. This May, we're going to have a bus lease vote. The bus lease right now costs about $266,000 a year. The new bus lease would cost $270,000, which is really not that much of an increase after five years. The new buses would have cameras in the front as well as on the stop arms, so that way you could see cars going through it, see what cars are going in front of it. There's a number of extra cameras on the buses themselves. And just doing an analysis of buying versus leasing, buying would require a large upfront amount of money, and you wouldn't see any kind of payback for at least 10 years. And you'd have a lot of upfronts. So I think leasing is really the way to go at the moment. Fiscal policies. On the agenda, you're going to see three fiscal policies. They are just being updated to match. So one of your policies, 6700, the new law allows you to go up to $20,000 in purchases and $35,000 in public works before you have to go out for a formal bid. We have that in one policy, and then it's contradicted in the next policy. So that makes 6700 and 6700 are matched, so that it says, and we have been practicing the New York State law, which is 20,000 in purchases as a bid and 35,000 as works. So those, these are just really to match the two things. Policy number 6500 is regarding RFPs. It is not required by law to go out to RFP. This gives you the option to. Our old board policy required you to go out for RFP. It's common in schools to have the option. That doesn't mean that you can't go out for it. It doesn't mean that you have to go out for it. It just gives you some flexibility. And then finally, the purchasing procedures revision. We typically get three quotes. It was saying to get four quotes. I'm just trying to align that to what we actually do in the business office. So they were not major changes. They're just changes really to bring us to what we're actually doing, and they haven't been updated in quite some time. And then school lunch. Right now, we get all free lunch in both buildings. The federal government has declared that they are ending that program. So next year, currently, as it stands, we'll continue to have all free lunch like we always had in the elementary school. Back in the high school, you'll now have to qualify for free lunch in order to get free lunch. That's starting next year. And that's if the federal government doesn't step in and update their programs. But as of right now, they said they are not extending the all-free lunch in all programs. And then finally, just a quick projection for this year. I'm thinking we're going to fall in the range of $200,000 to $300,000 into the fund balance. Originally, I thought we were going to put about $500,000, but we started the bond project, well, the building survey, and then we're looking to hire monitors. So I have folded that into the calculations. So we're still going to have a surplus year. It's just not going to be quite as big a surplus, but still a healthy one. Okay. Now, onto the budget. So for this year, we are looking to keep taxes. This works? Very nice. Okay. So the total revenue for this year, we're expecting to be $18,779,372. That's everything included. Last year is $18,607,000. So that's an increase of about 0.9%. What happened there is we're looking to increase tax revenue by 1.5%, but that will not hit people's tax bills for 1.5% because 0.6% of that is due to new businesses and new homes being built, so that will pick up that burden. So your tax bill would go up by about 0.9%. Now, on the last page, I'll have a graphic for it, but on a $200,000 house, that's about $28. The total expenditures are broken down as follows. The general support is $2374,933. That includes your central administration, your buildings in operations, fuel, electric, all the non-instructional items. That's actually less than last year because we're not going to purchase as much equipment and do any construction that we do, or equipment we purchase is going to be pushed through one of these grants that are being out by the federal government. So we're not going to have near as much on the capital project side. Instruction is $9524,45. Now, when you look at this budget in the instruction area, you're going to see some increases in certain areas. Those increases already exist. They happened mid-year, and they happened in response to COVID. So you're going to see things in the non-instructional. You're going to see it goes up $100,000. That includes monitors that we hired for the halls, for the cafeterias. That's going to include any additional aids we have. These people were hired this year, so when you see the increase from 100, it's not exactly an increase from 100. We have these expenses this year. They just weren't planned ahead of time because it's very difficult to plan with what COVID regulations are going to exist. Transportation, there's not going to be much of an increase there. We're looking to renew the lease. We had a five-year lease, $266 a year. We're looking to do $270 a year. There is some additional cost in transportation. That's for summer school transportation, but we will get aid on that. Employee benefits are going up a lot. Health insurance is 7% increase. Workers' compensation was a 15% increase this year. And these are not things that we can control. They're the market, and they happen. We've gotten away pretty lucky, to be honest, with our health insurance the last few years. We had a 0% increase last year. The year before that was 1%, and they returned some of our, some of our payments. So, you know, one year, 7%. Yeah, it's a hit, but we've had some good years, too. Debt service is $1,254. Now, when we started here, back in 2017, 18, we were paying about $1,500 a year. Since we've refinanced our bond and paid off one, we're paying about $250,000 less a year of debt, which is good. Transfers to other funds, that's actually just what we contribute to the cafeteria every year. That's the deficit between what we get in sales and what we use tax revenue, and a little bit for, for summer school special education. Wrong way. So the instructional initiatives that are included in the budget, we didn't add a lot this year because we added most of what we wanted to add last year. So this year, we're looking to add an ELA program. That's going to be grant-funded. Enhanced professional development for professional staff, so we're going to be part of Tri-State, although we've just found out that they're going to allow us to be ex officio members again, which means we don't actually have to pay to be part of it for another year. So that's actually nice for us. So I can take that out of the budget now, but when I originally designed this budget, I thought we might have to make a payment towards them. The expanded summer program is going to happen again this year. That's also going to be grant-funded. We do after-school programming. It's not an after-school program, but currently we do allow kids to do tutoring. We have teachers after school. Michael has been looking to add clubs. We're going to continue those, and they are also grant-funded. And all of the new programs that were added in the past year are going to continue in the budget. So some of the numbers that you'll see in this budget that have increased a lot were actually things that we added this year. They just weren't reflected in last year's budget because they hadn't occurred yet. Safety initiatives, things that we've done is we've added monitors to every bus. We've added monitors to the hall and cafeteria at GRM. And Jed has been working on security upgrades. They're none specific. He comes in, he's been working with Stanley Security, and every year we keep getting our security system closer to modern security systems, and we're going to continue to invest in that. Our facilities and planning, I talked about the new bus lease. We've got new audiovisual equipment that will eventually come in. Currently, there's a lot of supply chain issues. Things you ordered in July and August of last year have still not come in. You are tending to have a STEAM or Makerspace lab in your elementary school. That's going to be grant-funded as well. Jed has done an excellent job with Tina of planning out replacement of the technology infrastructure we have, and he was able to do most of this on grant funding as well. The laptops, the Chromebooks, the switchboards, repairs to the parking lots, we do them every year. And just the maintenance of all of the recently acquired assets that we have are just going to continue. School taxes, it's going to be a below 1% increase on your tax bill. So 1.5% is the total taxes, but because there are more properties to divide that 1.5% by, it will be less than 1%. Now, last year, I gave everybody a quote, and it actually came in even better. It's probably going to come even better this year, too. I tend to conservative, to give conservative numbers. But this is, these are the tax rates here. Just a quick aside, because people look at, like Deer Park and see $24 at Highland 15. How the tax system works is in Deer Park, they assess their properties at a lot lower, below the market value than Highland does. So what you have to look at is if you purchased your house for $200,000, your taxes in Deer Park should be the same as Highland. What happens is if you buy a $200,000 house in Deer Park, the assessor assesses it at $110,000. In Highland, they assess that $200,000 house at $160,000. And then there's something called equalization rate. And then there's something called equalization rate that they use to make it so that a market, the market value of your house really kind of determines your taxes. So that $24 is deceiving. They do actually even out, so that if you purchased your house for the same amount, you should pay about the same taxes, no matter which district, which town you live in. Otherwise, most of the additions that we have occurred this year, so there isn't a ton of new additions on next year's budget. Does board have any questions on? Okay. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Caleb.
Yep.
Okay. My report. You want to talk about the?
On the table are some copies of School Team. I meant to mention it before, or as I call it, the Mike Carpenteriary Report. They covered the elementary very well, and Mikey got a lot to be proud of at McKenzie. And they covered the high school and junior high school as well. So if you get a chance, take a copy of it, they're on the table. And I just want to acknowledge that the members of the Sheriff's Department that came to support Sean getting his AOK Award, and thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you for coming. I saw you was all walking through the door, and I leaned over to John, I says, "We got trouble tonight? Should I be aware of something?" And I saw Mr. Schiff walk through the door, I thought we were going to really have trouble. Thanks for coming. Thank you all for coming. I think this is most people we've had at a board meeting, meeting in about, what, a year maybe? So. Alright, public comment on consent agenda only. Any public comment? Moving forward, this is going to take a few minutes. I need a motion to approve consent items 701 through 803 excluding 706. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any conversation, any discussion?
None.
I'll take a vote. Kristen?
Yes.
Amador?
Yes.
I'm a yes, all yeses. I need a motion to table 706.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That is done. I have two walk-ons. Any old business to come before the board? Okay. I have two walk-ons. Resolution title revision director of instructional services and special projects. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the title revision of the Director of Instructional Services to Director of Instructional Services and Special Projects. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I do. Can we explain what special projects entail?
Everything I don't want to do. It includes grant writing. We needed some research on bookbags being carried in schools. I asked Scott to contact every school district in the county and get their policy on bookbags. And that's the kind of thing I don't have the time to do, but I think changing the title is really more descriptive of what Scott does. He does more than instructional services, and this title reflects what he actually does.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Morgano. Any other discussion?
Salary remains the same, correct?
Correct.
I'll take a vote. Kristen?
Yes.
Amador?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution hiring of five part-time monitors at the George Senior High School, Junior Senior High School, sorry. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools, the Board of Education hereby approves opening five part-time monitor positions at the junior, senior high school for the 2021, 2022 school year. Be resolved, the Board of Education of Eldred Central School District has authorized the implementation of the signing bonus program for new monitor employees of the Eldred Central School District in hopes of attracting and retaining critical employees in these departments. Be further resolved, monitor incentive program is a $2,500 bonus effective September 1st, 2021, that will be awarded to new monitors if the following requirements have been met. Whereas a monitor who has at least 95% attendance, whereas this will be given to two payments of $1,250 after completion of the first month of employment, with 95% attendance, the second payment, $1,250 will be given at the end of June 2022 with 95% attendance. Be it further resolved, the sum of $2,500 will be awarded when the criteria is met. This will be given in two payments, $1,250, two payments, the total incentive shall not exceed $2,500. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Kristen?
Yeah, wait, can we just describe what these monitors are going to do?
They're mainly going to monitor the gang bathrooms to make sure that students don't hang out in there, and that when they're in there, they're in there to do what they're supposed to do. And just providing general supervision in the building.
More audience.
More audience.
Any more discussion?
No.
Kristen?
Yes.
Amador?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. District clerk announcement of the availability of positions for the Eldred Central School District Board of Education seat. There is one five-year term available on the board commencing on July 1st, 2022, and continuing through June 30th, 2027. This seat is currently held by Kristen Smith. April's Bozey's vote. Board meeting budget adoption Tuesday, April 26th, changed from Tuesday, April 12th. So our April meeting will be on the 26th instead of April 12th. Public comment on anybody that wants to talk about anything that's going on? No public comment?
Hi, I'm Tom.
Go for it.
Okay. Look at you folks. Thank you so much. I just think that's fantastic. Thank you very much. I appreciate you're here, and you've been down the east toward it, you know, long way there. How are you feeling, Rob?
We'd like to get a picture before the meeting, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah?
Okay, let's do that picture right now. Take your masks off too, please. I should have did it for the AOK awards, and I screwed that up.
Oh, is it? Yeah, so I'm going to take this picture.
You want the whole, you want the whole board with you?
Yes.
Come on back, Mike, I don't bite. Way to be placed.
Come on, Amador, get over here.
Can you get me a seat?
Is that good?
Just in the chair. Kristen, move your chair over.
I'm just standing behind this. I'm going to take our mask off?
Yep.
Yeah, take your mask off. Looking like a Halloween picture.
What we're going to do is we... Okay. Let's, let's, let's. Do you see that?
You guys, you have to tighten it a little bit.
Stand normal. We'll play. Here we go.
Camera's right here.
Okay.
Okay, so, let me put this down.
Right, let me fix my hair. Hold on.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. I got you.
Here we go. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I send it to your email?
Thank you guys again for cooperation with DARE and everything you do. Oh, it's our pleasure. Thank you for everything you do. You guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I got something I missed online.
Huh?
I got something I missed online. I forgot to introduce and welcome Remi. Remi?
Yeah.
The custodian.
It's always a pleasure. Take care.
Yep, we'll see you.
Take care. Thank you.
What'd you forget, Caleb?
I forgot to welcome Remi Parker to our custodian team, to our facilities team, so welcome. Thank you for showing up. Congratulations. And that was all I forgot.
And it was a big shoot. Well, you get to work with Troy.
Good luck. No, you'll fit in good. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Now I'll take a motion to enter into a second executive session for contracts.
I'll make that motion.